7 o'clock. This meeting at the Denville Township Board of Education is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting was provided for the Daily Record and for the Star Ledger of Morris County has been delivered to the township clerk and has been posted on the bulletin board of the Board of Education office on each of the buildings in the school district. For all purpose? Here. 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 We are going to move to executive session for legal and personnel. Mr. Lure, would you care to move it, sir?
I'm used to meeting. Especially through the session.
Each of the Open Public Meetings Act, the purpose of this closed section will be to discuss negotiations.
Legal and personnel.
Legal and personnel, but not negotiations. Okay. Minutes of this session will be made available to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Seven? One second. All in favor? Any opposed? We are in executive session at 7:01 PM. We're back in public session at 7:33. At this time, we'll have the fledge of allegiance. Please stand.
We invite you to the conference, which is one of the most beautiful gatherings in this town.
Thank you. Time now after your last presentation? Yeah.
Good to see you. Thank you for coming out tonight. Talking to you guys. And to you out there, no audience, we appreciate it. I hope you can hear me over the ruckus that's out there. So, this is our final board presentation on the 2006, 2016, 17 budget. This is just a calendar of, it just shows that we go back. This process takes a long time. We start in October. As a matter of fact, we tell people, we want to know any kind of new things by October 15th. By October 15th, we want to know about something that's going to be new, a new initiative by Dr. Cullis, some new personnel, anything like that. We want to know about it so we can get moving on it and see if we can fund it. Our goal is to use targeted data to analyze and identify areas of opportunity to improve individual student achievement, create a strategic plan with the community involvement, that's two-year goal, enhance the communications process, including two-way communication, and continue to raise the level of expectations within the community. The first goal will probably never be off that board. We'll probably always do that. The second one, hopefully, the only way that will be off is if we say, continue with a strategic plan, because in the strategic plan, there should be a goal based on student achievement. So maybe, I'm wrong, maybe that will be off because it'll talk about the strategic plan, but it'll still be in the forefront because it'll be part of the plan that we'll live by for the next five years. We do have a plan to start the strategic plan in September, and we have already discussed it, and there's money in the budget for it. Also communications, that'll probably also be in the strategic plan, and that will be something we're going to continue. And I don't think we'll ever say that our expectations should not continue to be raising, so that'll probably always be there. You can see from our budget breakdown that we're a people business. I mean, the majority of our funds from our budget go toward employee benefits and salaries. We don't make anything, we don't sell anything, we have a lot of people. We have, as a matter of fact, we have about 315 employees. Some are part-time, some are full-time, some are union, some are non-union, and that takes money to fund, obviously. You can see some of the, the next slide talks about discretionary and nondiscretionary. So, our discretionary spending is really only 6.7% compared to our nondiscretionary, which would include salaries, benefits, also it would include insurance, you know, liability insurance, things like that, operating expenses like heat, and then our discretionary spending would be professional development, technology, it would be supplies, even books and things like that. That would be the discretionary lines. And you can see that towns like Denville, this is not uncommon, in your suburbs especially, our local taxes, meaning the money to run our schools, 92 cents on every dollar comes directly from us, the taxpayers of Denville. We get very little in a percentage, you know, we're happy when we get $40,000 difference, right? We're happy when we get 40,000, but very little of our money comes from any other sources besides our local taxes. You can see our state and federal grants, and then other revenue up top. So, this is the budget breakdown. I know the board likes to see this. It's a, I think it puts a little bit more common sense titles to those lines, because I think it's sometimes hard to understand what's in the lines. So you can see all those different lines that we have there. We have instruction, obviously, special education, basic skills, extracurricular, there's administration, state and federal grants, capital outlay, and debt service. These are some areas that we have funded in the budget for improvements. Our techno, this is just for technology, so we have some things, some replacements, just because things, they need to be replaced as they get older. We have some improvements. We're always looking to improve the Wi-Fi environment. We're doing that document archiving project over the summer, network upgrades, the one-to-one initiative from the Chromebook initiatives in there, the staff attendance program, which is more than that. What happened is, I'm not sure if everybody knows about this, but the A-SOP program, everybody's using it except us. I know, I don't want to just do it because of that, but the problem is, nobody wants to work for us anymore, because if you work in A-SOP, it's much easier, because you can decide when you're in a sub. So, if you're an A-SOP person, you can go on A-SOP and go, "I'm going to pick these days right here," instead of having to wait till 5:00 in the morning to get a phone call. So, we're hoping that the A-SOP thing will help us be a little bit more competitive with the other subs. Our salary for subs is okay, but our, we don't have the A-SOP, and everybody keeps asking us, "What's your A-SOP password?" And we don't have one. So, the next thing is major projects for buildings and grounds, facilities. You can see we have the upgrade to this room right here. We have the office moved to Town Hall, which obviously, if you saw the last budget, it's much reduced from what we originally started with, so that should come down substantially. We have a lot of site work to do at Lakeview. We could make that line easily $200,000 and still probably not have enough, so the plan was to do that over two years. It would be great if we could do, maybe we can do some more of that if we can get it done, but it's the, basically, if you've been up there, pretty much every curb will be replaced. There's a couple sections that are okay, that we'll leave, but pretty much, the rest of it is just deteriorated. There's really almost no curbs. They have the majority of their cement walkways, their concrete walkways are in disrepair, so they'll be replaced. That was, the original plan was to try to put 200,000 in the budget and do the cement, the concrete work, and the paving, but we decided to try to do it in two years. But, you know, maybe if some of these projects right here for the 671,000, if they come in less, that could be an error. If we can fit it in, we would do it. We already did the class lockers, which was good. We were able to fund that right now. We did it as a project over the summer. And we also have money for the trailers to do some demo and repair. And then that Lakeview cafeteria wall leak that you, as a board member, has told me, has been on this list for years, we think we have a, we're confident we have a very good solution to solve that, and it's an inside and outside and on-the-roof solution. Next thing are all the other projects that don't fit into the two first categories. So we have some money in the budget for Dr. Cullis's Science and Social Studies Tech Series replacement improvements. We may also be able to do some math in that budget. The strategic planning is in there. If you've been following us recently, you've noticed that we started this free lunch program for students that are economically disabled, disadvantaged, sorry, and that's $33,000 to fund that for next year. We do hope to get some money from other sources for that. We feel very strongly that we'll have some federal aid, as well as maybe some local aid to help defray some of that 33,000, but we don't have it right now, so we had to put it in the budget. Lakeview needs some replacement of their blackboards. We need to lease a bus. One of our autistic classes needed some, it's a little different, because we need to do PD every day in there, so that helps us give the PD time. And we also had an increase to our prescription insurance coverage. Very, very good news is that we're looking to bring on a math coach. We brought on a literacy coach the year before I got here, and now we are looking to bring on a math coach to do the same, to help the teachers improve their teaching of math skills throughout the year. So over the years, the district has banked cap. What happens with, the state allows you to go to 2%, and there are some ways you can go over 2%, and one of them would be if you had extreme increases in your medical insurance for your staff, and you could get a waiver, which would allow you to go a little over 2%. But the district has stayed under 2% for a few years, when, especially when the evaluations of the properties, when the assessments were low, and the taxes were going up without increasing your budget, the district banked the cap. Basically, what that means is, you don't take the money from the taxpayers, but you bank it in the future if you need it. So, we are planning on taking all the bank cap that is going to be expiring this year, but it will leave us with $453,000 for next year in the budget as banked cap. The tax impact on the K-8 district, very important, we always have to get this right. Denville taxpayers pay taxes to several different groups. This is only one group. This is the local K-8 school districts. It's Riverview, Lakeview, and Valleyview schools. And our impact on the taxpayer for this year's budget is actually a negative $47 per year on the average assessed house of $403,200. But we have to make it clear that it's, that's for our portion of the budget. We've been doing this now two years, just a property tax comparison of this group that we have. This is our group that we call a comp group, and the comp group is a group of 15 local towns from Somerset County to Bergen County, all with K-8 school districts, between 1,000 and 3,000 students, and all in District Factor Group I, which means not the wealthiest of towns, but the second highest in socioeconomic status, and also all those other categories. So it's every school that fits that, every district that fits those categories. And you can see where our taxes are in relationship to some of the other towns that are in there. This is that budget handout that's over there, just has a more breakdown, and it's over there on the table if anybody wants one. It's also posted online. Then we'd like to end it with this little "Did You Know" section. So this budget supports $671,000 in maintenance projects, $215,000 in technology, and $475,000 in other curricular enhancements. The district's also completing a $1.9 million ESOP project. ESOP stands for Energy Savings Improvement Program. As a matter of fact, the final contract is for approval tonight, and we expect to break ground August 1st. That's going to do lighting enhancements, HVAC, any other types of environmental projects, for example, some insulation, anything that can save resources to pay for the projects. As a matter of fact, there's no increase, there is no increase to the taxpayers for this $1.9 million project. It's totally funded by the savings in our energy spend over the next 15 years. We also have a $1.2 million roofing repair budget at Lakeview and Valleyview that will take place this summer, and that was all funded by reserves. We also have good news about that. It looks like the vids came in with the engineering fees somewhere around $250,000 less than we had budgeted, and that money will just go back into our reserves. And the board, the board is also working with the town to move our office into Town Hall, from the rented space that we're currently using. Our activity fee structure, which we committed to phasing out in thirds, this would be the second third, we can talk about whether or not we know how to phase it out totally next year. Our clubs will go from, our clubs in the elementary school from $25 just to no fee. Valleyview clubs will go from 75 to 50, and then athletics in Valleyview, cheerleading, musical, anything that's a little bit more involved, like a club or more than a club, will go from 115 to $85. We're also looking for new ways to bring in new revenue. We sold 501 Open Aki Road, which will more than help to fund the project at the Town Hall. We have rental income, we have tuition income, and we're always looking for more ways to bring in money. We are doing a little bit of advertising on our Friday folder blast emails. The good news, I mean, the good news about that is, it's a service we provide, and the fees for the advertising pay for the entire cost of the project. So our Friday folder doesn't cost us anything in terms of manpower or the actual program that we use to send it out. And all the stuff that I have to present to you is now done. Does anybody have questions about the budget or anything that I talked about so far?
People in the, plenty of them, who have lost to the United States. I was over in the county, but it's not there. Are you all the state numbers, so I don't have any transportation to really get there? All the other costs, right by the, you.
Right, so, it would be unfair to include, it would be unfair to include in those comparisons the cost of busing, because if you either have it or you don't have it, that would be a huge savings if you don't, if you live in a town that's, say, a mile and a half square, we'd be at a big disadvantage fiscally, in terms of reporting.
So you're skipping numbers, and you said you dumped the B.
But that's not, you're thinking of something else, though. That's the, that's the cost per pupil.
I'm saying like, you say like, I'm really down, but you're also going to have a town, like, you live, I think, somewhere like 20 square miles.
Yeah.
They don't have buses, because either it's either getting, it's getting school, it's walking, walking, you know, it's right there.
Right.
So, you know, I understand that from the education standpoint, you're not going to get a bus. From the taxpayer's standpoint, the overhead of the district, obviously, to run school buses there.
Costs a lot, right.
Costs a lot.
Right, so, just to be clear, the three columns to the right, correct, that is accounted for. The column where it just says residential property tax, that doesn't come from the same website. That just comes from, that comes from our tax data. I put the two sources at the bottom. Meaning your average property tax, it tells you how much you're paying. The other ones, it does back out the cost of the busing, just to make it even. Any other questions?
I have one.
Go ahead.
A couple applied for, when you were talking about the math.
Mm-hmm.
There are a couple other conditions in that one, you're, you're.
There is a part-time special ed teacher that is required by, you know, there's just not enough teachers to go around for the amount of kids we need. And then, we have a part-time CST member that we were able to move some money around and cut some costs with, that was the other thing I showed you guys with the behaviorist, and the savings with the behaviorist will help us fund to make that a full-time position, because what's happening is, we have a person getting paid part-time, but is working full-time, so we need, we need to bring that position up to full-time.
It's not, it's just, you know, what I'm going to do with the home leader, it looks like we're adding a full, full-time, kind of, it's really.
Part-time to full-time, yeah.
It's like, you could really just play them. You know? See, it's like, you know, that, 20 minutes, I don't know, I keep on having to, it's.
You think for that next year, yeah?
Yeah. We can, uh, okay. Keep your, keep me.
Yeah.
Do you have any comments?
I have my confirmation.
Okay.
So what, okay.
We have some comments here, we have some suggestions, there's a question where, we're trying to construct an actual, the values included now, so it's just off the record. We just go through and test it out. But there are lots of companies, and that's, that's everything.
But I mean, you know, we also cut the 100,000 out of the Lakeview part, that we all want.
I was just thinking, too, that is, it's also used, I mean, I've got there hundreds of, I think, there, and not only we're spending on social, it's not going to be, it's, you know, it's, and then we still have money in the budget for half a hundred, we're going to go. Half a hundred.
All right. Do you want to move on?
Do you have time?
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
Back to college, are you going to speak about park a little bit?
Uh.
Or just an update on how it's going? Okay. I'm sorry?
Passing something.
All right, so.
So we're underway, oh, you're.
I'll go through, I was just, I put it on my agenda, just asking.
That was each other, okay.
So, school's closed on May 27th. A notification will be sent via the Friday folder email, also June 20th to 22nd. Sustainable Jersey update will be next meeting on May 9th with Bradford Tanning and Ron Rossi. And the lead update is, we did receive the report today around 6:40 PM. It will be posted on our website tomorrow morning, along with a letter explaining what the next steps are, and we will look, continue to have a public forum to discuss exactly what's going on with this, what the steps are.
We are halfway through our second week of park, and we really have had no issues. The one issue that the state had, where there was some difficulty with Pearson, was a day that we were not testing, because we had an in-service day and we chose not to test on that day. So we have had no, no issues at this point, and we're well within our participation rates required, so we're very, very pleased with how that is going. The other thing I have for you is my miracle number four, which is to create and implement the staff development academy. So I just wanted to give you the update. The front is the original goal, but on the back is the update. So we have offered a total of 14 different courses, and of those courses, and they're all listed, the titles are listed there, we have technology, we have academic courses, and we have wellness courses. We have had 258 total attendees, so some staff members have attended more than one, so 58 staff members have participated in more than one workshop, and one person has in as many as six. But this accounts for 155 different staff members. So as Mr. Porte said, we have about 315, that's about 50% of our staff, including instructional aides and bus drivers have been participating in the staff development academy. That's really only been running since the end of February, so we've had a lot of turnout for the courses. We had five workshops that were provided by outside vendors, through St. Clair's, through YMCA, through Blue Titan, and through CPR professionals local here in Denville, and nine workshops were provided by our district staff. The most popular was the CPR, and we trained 76 staff members in CPR and AED, including the infant. So, in addition to the participation in the workshops, we now have 76 more staff members that are trained in CPR. We had 28 staff members attend the Active Intruder Self-Defense Course, and we've had a variety through Google Classroom, because there were five different levels. So at the initial levels, we had larger numbers, over 20, and then at the advanced levels, we had 11. Our average course attendance is 11 staff members to balance. We had, the lowest we've had is one, I mean, sorry, one workshop of four people, the rest have all had 11 or more. And then followed by, in popularity, the nutrition and the wellness courses. We're getting a large turnout for those. So we're pretty excited about the offerings. Every, of all of the workshops that have already taken place, I have surveyed, and every staff member has indicated that they are interested in continuing with workshops next year. So, it's been a great turnout. I'm already excited and surveying of what topics they are interested in pursuing next year, but there, there has really been a great response. I think the use of signup genius has just been so easy on me as far as monitoring and keeping track of who's attending, as well as their ease of signing up. They don't have to worry about paperwork, we just go on signup genius, they can add, they can delete if they, it turns out they can't attend, and people were fighting over spots, because I'll say how many spots are open, and the CPR, it's like, they must be checking it over and over, because as soon as one opens up, instantly someone is trying to fill it. So, it was really great. So this not only concludes my report, but this concludes goal number four. So we'll be.
Just one question, the nutrition is always, is it done through the Y?
The nutrition is done through St. Clair's. We have one on managing stress, so it's balancing your work life and home life, it was really, really good turnout for that one, but that's done by St. Clair's. And then they're also doing a nutritional cooking class this month. The fitness is the one that YMCA is doing, they're running yoga, spinning, and weight, strength building. So, and they, for those, for St. Clair's and YMCA, there was no charge. Overall, we spent less than $5,000 training all of the courses, and mostly they're going to our own staff, but the fact, that is less than we would spend if we had trained 76 people at $50, just CPR. Yeah. If you could say it for?
I have a question. You said that we're meeting our attendance goals for the park testing. Is that all the various subgroups that the state analyzes for? Because I know we met overall last year, but they were unhappy with at least one, I don't remember how many of our subgroups.
We had four subgroups, economically disadvantaged and special education in two of our groups, and one we did not have any subgroups that did not make the participation. As of right now, we're okay, but we have about another week and a half to go, so we are far below our numbers from last year, not in the subgroups. We were right, very close to that subgroup in one particular school. And so we're kind of, that's a waiting game to see how the next week and a half goes for that. Economically disadvantaged subgroups, they would be, their participation rates are fine. That one, I think we will have no issue on this year. The only one will be special education in one group.
Thank you.
Now, did I, uh, explain something?
I see, are we, in the final half of, we've moved in the, have this, this, um, new, other project, and we've, um, this, this, we're moving early on, uh, it's going to, uh, be like, uh, it's, it's, uh, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Nothing else there now? Uh, I will open up for public comments, any, any comments, your name to the record, at 8:01 PM? If you have any comments, please approach the podium, sign in and state your name to the record. Just considering waiting for things. Yes, okay. And if there are no comments, I will close the public session also at 8:01 PM, and we will move on. Nothing else there now, uh, I will open up for public comment, um, any, uh, any comments you may do to the difference at eight oh one P M. If you have any comments, please approach the podium, uh, sign in and state your name to the record. Just considering waiting for things. Yes, okay, and if there are no comments, I will close the public session also at eight oh one P M. And we will move on to old business. Mr. Appeloni, would you care to take us through the old, the old business end? Thank you, thank you, Mr. Lera. Any comments or questions, I know we had some late correspondence about the, uh, what the enrollment was presented. Good. Anything else? Uh, anyone, call call please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Pass?
Yes.
Mr. Maloney? Mr. Kelly?
Yes. Great, thank you. Uh, moving on to new business personnel, if there are no objections, as under personnel, I would like to move items one through five as a block. Uh, these are teacher, uh, hiring, this recommendations, et cetera. They are, uh, proving the job description that's a bit rigorous, which was what I mentioned earlier, and, uh, giving, um, the minutes to, uh, faculty to attend to. Do you have a second?
Are you going to make a correction on number one N? On the certification, um, in the last, very last, and clearly this is clearly a client that keeps this in mind, that should be inside and second thing that we need to do, to control this.
The other one above is correct at one point, please. All correct. And do you have a pass?
Yeah, well, that's what we have to talk, sure. More money, council, that's, I don't know. So, yeah.
What does that mean, the word of doing, you can see that? And if a piece of gold is not to do that, we said, you know. I don't, I mean, is that what it's been long, you're gonna figure it out?
Sure, are you ready for any of that?
Now, there's none? Is it okay?
Yeah, I, I used to know that when the United States was, uh, it's kind of like, like a driver of, of years, if I, uh, do, 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 you know, and maybe you guys know that, but, uh, I think all I feel.
They're both mandated, policy and the regulations both mandated. Very minor change, you're looking to change.
Oh yeah, it was very minor.
And the other part is, to make it easier on the outside is, the policy for what? Regulations. This is one of those ones that, yeah, I agree with. Just be mandatory policy. As a matter of fact, you're gonna see one poll employing a superintendent because we don't have that one. That's mandatory too. We only have evaluated superintendents, we don't have any more.
Oh, well then, they've had it.
Yeah, exactly. So we will, uh, you're gonna have that policy coming down. By the way, our policy's just on its own. Everything except the five thousands is complete if you would look at it now.
I'll just go on the record again, sorry. For policy, I think five-five-one-two, the harassment, intimidation and bullying one. Just when it goes up online, if you can make sure that you don't strike out the last revision date, the date of December sixteenth, twenty thirteen. The way the revision reads, strikes it out and just puts in whatever today's date is, I guess. But I don't see any reason when you keep all the other revision dates. Yeah.
Let me give it just a...
That's what you said to me last time, but I just wanna make sure when it's posted, are you gonna go online for mine, somebody that not gonna need the history?
Um, policy thirteen-ten, we unfortunately did not get an opportunity to discuss this personally. I for one still have an issue with the approval, with the approval of the superintendent's appointment. And that, um, in the formation of an administrative staff. I, I still really have a problem with that, I don't know if anyone else does. Believe that strikes, that strikes you, people language are usually different.
Yeah, I, I spoke to Dino earlier, um, uh, just, you know, the person up, the, uh, the thirteen-ten, getting something back on how this evolved. Um, you know, I, I have concerns, uh, especially through our future voice about paragraph number three and four. Uh, you know, I don't wanna see the board blink when it's, uh, it's, uh, I'd say that's demand driven options. I'd rather see the board say that, uh, according to what we're saying, an option for the candidate, add this recommendation to the committee, or before, to be done to pass, and superintendents work this thing in a process. And then in paragraph four, I'd like to see the board vacation to approve or disapprove of the candidate's recommendation. Just whatever they want, but ultimately the board has to approve or not. Unfortunately, uh, with the position. The, 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 the language here for the...
I agree with what both of you are saying, that I didn't like the language, but the last time we spoke about this, we were told that, you know, although it's not a mandatory policy, it was coming out of the new...
It's coming out of the new...
So I don't know how much leeway we have.
We didn't unfortunately be able to discuss it in committee, because this is, they were coming out of the ethics committee rules, right?
Which, you know, could change the next month when they make another rule.
To kinda complement that, so I don't know if they have any flexibility, I just don't like them.
Well, I agree, so we could not vote on it.
You can table it.
You can table it, it's not mandatory.
It's also, you know, it isn't a policy.
But, I mean...
I, I think it's been a hot, hot policy.
I think...
I, I need to suggest, uh, board, you know, change, or modify, but, uh, I'm just thinking about, you know, you know, ten, twenty, thirty years from now, change, but I think they overstepped the ethics. Uh, you know, either once the board micromanages, every interview and, and pilot, and this, and I think, we, we, very, very important, and, uh, just interviews and cast the decision. And, uh, so the candidates, really haven't been that good, and we can, we can edit this, like, the end part, and you set it up, uh, just working on the interview, right, which came up on first, so I, I think it's gotta be, uh, we, we work, uh, I think it's not, it's not mandatory, the board is having a committee, but the board's not adopted, people participate in that, uh, process. And I would think that if you come to a consensus after that, committee or board thought that you, certainly want to, this person on board.
I agree with that, I mean, rework the third one, table it for tonight. It's the third paragraph, it's the problem.
There is from the commission's... Or we can get rid of, like Steve said, it's not a required, so we can get rid of it.
Well...
But I think the way it's written right now, it doesn't, it's contrary to what the ethics commission rules.
Well, I will say...
Currently, yeah, yeah.
I will say that I agree with what Don said. In my time on the board, it's been beneficial to have a second round of interviews, so that even, you know, the superintendent who put forward a candidate agreed that the candidate wasn't the right person, after interviewing with the full board, which a business administrator will always have to work with the full board. So, I mean, you know, it's not a, you know, it's not a dynamic that's never gonna happen. So, and I, everybody who was here knows that I objected, you know, to how we did it the last time, because I felt that we didn't actually follow our policies. And I know there was some disagreement on that, so I would hate to get rid of a policy that says that, you know, the board has the right to interview, and that the board, which that hasn't been changed, the board shall fix the compensation to be paid, is, you know, something that I don't think we should give up as a right, and you get rid of the policy and you as a board give up that right. So, I don't actually wanna see the thing abolished, but reworded in the third paragraph, if we have the leeway, yeah, I support that. So your final table, what I think is what it is. Well, she would like it to stay without the blue at all, which I don't think is an option.
Yeah, I mean, the current policy says the board will interview the candidate as recommended by the superintendent. The SEC ruling states no more than two board members may participate on a personnel committee, one that is established by the CSA and coordinated by members of the administrative staff. However, the board member's participation is limited to... So, I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, I, I think it should go back to finance, or to personnel. Let them dig into all this stuff a little bit deeper, talk to Strauss or Matt or whoever you need to talk to, and bring it back.
Send that to me.
Okay.
So we will... So Kathy, you take that, uh, what?
Actually, we need that.
Yeah. I'll strike, uh, thirteen-ten, table that for, uh, later discussion. Kathy. I'll read that.
Read that, I'll try to table in thirteen-ten. Okay. Is there anything on, anything else, that we've got on the other end? If not, that's a wall company?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Luna?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ha?
Yes.
Mr. Marlon?
Yes.
Mr. Capella?
Yes. Thank you, moving on to finance, Mr. Luna, would you care to take this to finance?
Yeah, um, I think it's all in your hands, you guys, so, um, just fill your budget, please, and, and do, two thousand nine, two thousand nine. Question, do you have a plan for the agenda?
I'll start you, thank you, Kathy. Yeah, you can't, you can't pull your shot that far out.
I would, um, I would second a lot of what Dave said, and the only thing I would add is that, uh, I really, this is my first year being on finance, and appreciate the hard work that goes into it from the administration, particularly Demaris, and, um, and understanding that the county did not have any issues. We've had, not issues, but, you know, things they wanted to edit on the, on the, uh, budget in the past, there was nothing that came back. Um, the only comment I would make is that, one thing I always, in finance meetings, I asked it several times, is reoccurring costs always concern me, adding them into the budget, because we're, you know, adding costs that are gonna continue to grow as, uh, as years go on. But I will say that, um, that Stephen Demaris came back with a lot of things that were reductions in reoccurring costs, and every time we had discussions on personnel additions, or things, how we wanted to handle them, was the discussion of, well, what does this mean long-term? And long-term, I think this is not sustainable, do it this way, we should do it that way. So there was a lot of discussions in that realm, so I do appreciate it, but I would warn all of us as we move forward, to keep an eye on our reoccurring costs. A lot of these costs continue to go up when we add additional technology, which we should, which is excellent and really beneficial and, uh, keeps us up to speed. It, uh, it adds a lot of reoccurring costs, uh, down the road, so, but thank you for looking at it this year, and, uh, congratulations.
I don't feel the same about, really about patting on the back. We're making pay off the work of past boards by being able to take advantage of things, and it's great, but we're doing a lot of things, and it's not gonna cost the taxpayers because of the unique situation this year. So I agree with what you just said, Mike, about we have to be very careful, but I think as a board, I'm not sure we should be proud of ourselves that we're allowing a budget with this much loose stuff in it, to pat ourselves on the back, that we know that there's, I don't know what you wanna call it, whether you wanna call it fluff, or you wanna call it known non-real funds in the budget. I mean, that I can list three off the top of my head, that I brought up in committee while I was still on finance, that had no resolution, uh, to me, it doesn't make me feel good, that I know that we're giving a lot of wiggle room for whatever could happen. What's gonna happen with the ten thousand dollars that we've already spent for the lockers at Riverview, and the, I forget what the number was for the cash finder, and things like that. So, I mean, it's, we're supposed to be the oversight mechanism, and we're not, at the time when we're creating a budget, making sure that we have enough oversight to know exactly where we're designating the funds to.
But on the flip side of that, there are things we can't make a certain amount, right? And that legislation does, it's an out of, out of standard situation, so that we have the wrong idea that coming up. So, to my mind, if some of that money, it's just a bit of purpose, coming back, which we know is gonna come, we just don't know what it might be. To me, I'm afraid.
Yeah, and, and, and I, I was gonna say something similar to Dino too, in the fact that we probably have some, uh, expenses on plumbing issues that might be coming up or whatever, that, that are... So I, I understand where you're coming from, Ariana, and I think there is, uh, I, I think that we ask a lot of questions in finance, we, we dug pretty deep, um, there are, uh, some, some areas that certainly, you know, there's some, a little bit extra built in, but I think we always seem to find ways to spend that extra, um, in legitimate ways, I mean, right?
Of course, we always find ways to spend the extra.
You're gonna have, you're gonna have plumbing costs coming up, that could be hundreds of thousands of dollars. And if we didn't have anything built in there, we'd be dipping into reserves pretty significantly. And I don't know if we wanna drain half of our maintenance reserve on a plumbing issue that could be coming up significantly in the very near future that we need to take here, so, uh, some of it, I think, is worth it.
We also, as a board, committed not to, you know, not to freeze budgets, uh, according to what we do here, for the special needs, uh, and how, and how people are getting hired and different things. So, I mean, we as a board definitely made sure, making sure that we're able to do that.
I don't know when we as a board committed to not freezing budgets, but every year I've been on the board, budget technicals...
We always freeze budgets. I just, I think that leads to, leads to bad outcomes.
Million dollars worth of being discussed. So, for example, we already know the job that they do is more in the range of three hundred thousand, not a hundred thousand. So, we know we're gonna bang out a hundred. If we could do some more of that, because we reallocated some money from the issue, and do a little bit more of that project, I think it's a little scary to think that we need a hundred thousand a year over the next few years, or maybe even a hundred over two years, something like that. If we can maybe allocate fifty thousand more dollars because we were saving a little bit of money on some of this stuff, and do a hundred fifty thousand dollars worth of it, and then maybe do the other fifty thousand, it'll make our budget extra at least. And we're still trying to replenish the money with the one point, really nine hundred fifty thousand taken out for the roof project. Because remember, in four years, we had another million dollar roofing project coming out. According to our, all of our, you know, our survey of our roofs and our architects, it goes by how long the warranty lasts. Oh, I also want to mention, I don't know if you guys realize this, but the new roof is a four-year warranty. That's, that's not normal. You live at forty different times. They have a four-year warranty on the roof.
Just to clarify too, my comments about how the process well had to do with not so much the tax impact, um, that's certainly a positive for taxpayers, but you're right, Mariana. I mean, that, that tax impact is, is based upon some circumstances that were not within our control on this board, but were fortunate circumstances for both us and the township, um, in general, uh, from the perspective of the impact of the taxpayer's budget. But I guess my comment was more how much work went into getting to where we were on this, on this one in particular. And it's never easy, because when we start off, we always look, and I can remember the first finance meeting, looking going saying, I don't know how we're gonna do this, because we're short like two million dollars somewhere here. So, you know, the fact that we were able to squeeze it all in, get what we had to get done, I think, um, and, and how much work goes into it, particularly putting the line items together. I know Demarek, uh, tremendous amount of time. We had a lot of questions, and even on that meeting that you were in, Mariana, on how the lines were separated and, and the different categories. And, and Maris worked really hard on putting those together. So that was, my comments were in relation to the work that was done on the budget. Um, I mean, I'm glad to see that the tax impact is lower in taxpayers' sense. Fortunate circumstances this year. And we can do those decisions.
But again, the fair is the feeling, and I know it's not for, but we're standing on the back of previous boards, previous boards that have passed, that we were the political balance of the year. Uh, so it would be something that is great for us, and that would be the purpose, not something that will reoccur. Something that is not going to be good for after-hospital.
I know it's not gonna reoccur.
Because we're using our full two percent. We're not banking anything.
Next year, we've got another, what, four hundred thousand dollars of expir- of expiring cap. It, it bothers me that we are increasing the budget by, what is it, four and a quarter, four and a half percent, something like that? Four point one, my apologies. Uh, and we're doing it, I mean, I, I understand that it's completely legal to do it this way. I understand we're not breaking any rules. I understand that we are using the money that was, we are using the, the tax cap that was put away by previous boards, uh, but it's still, you're still supposed to, as I would venture to guess ninety-nine percent of the public understand it, if the budget is going up by more than two percent, it's supposed to go for a vote. I understand that we don't have to, and we are playing by the rules by this, but it bothers me that we're doing it.
What do you suggest?
If I had any other suggestions, I would have made them before. That's why it bothers me. I can't come up with anything else.
I mean, let, let's not forget too, that out of our control, prescription costs thirty percent increase this year, and plus, we're gonna vote on something later today that's also gonna increase our cost of benefit. We are go, how much did we have to increase last year on not the prescription, but the actual hospital benefits? So, I mean, these are all costs that are reoccurring that, you know, that's reoccurring cost, and also we've got, you know, two hundred fifty thousand dollars in technology, and, you know, it's a lot of stuff fit into one budget, and, you know, we can, we can get some of the things in that we need to get done. I mean, these are not, this is all, if we looked at that, that LRFP, these are all in the category one. The stuff that we're not doing that is in the category one that needs to be done. I mean, we, we can't, we can't have curbs that are literally, Steve's right, I mean, I, my kids gotta like you, the curbs are disintegrating. They're just not there. They're just poof, like, like somebody, I don't know what they did. So, it is what it is. We have to take care of our bill. We have to do, we do this. It's not fun. It's like, it's like, putting a roof on your house is never fun. Like, people will come over and say, hey, check out my new roof. It's awesome. But it's a lot better when you say, hey, look, the roof's not leaking. So, I mean, stuff we have to do. Um, it's not, it's not easy. Nobody wants to go through two million dollars and have that little budget down, nine hundred change on roofs, but we have to do it, so.
But that's also on the back of previous boards, that we're doing the whole roof project, because it's all coming out in reserves. Because we couldn't fit it into this budget. Plus, we put the bank cap, but we couldn't fit that into the budget. I mean, it's, you know.
Well, I think there's different ways we could have done this. Probably could have fit it in, but then you took away.
Well, and when we originally spoke about it, we were going to fit it in. When we, when we originally got us to vote on it, we were, you know, taking it out so that we could start the process, that we were gonna actually look to fit it in. And then the recommendation changed.
And that, that, yeah, that was the sum of, we were, we never talked about a million dollars. Some of the, some of it, we sold, but then we all decided that.
No, I said the recommendation changed. I didn't say it was. Well, it's, the bank cap is only off statistically responsible boards in the past, not. Right. And I don't have a problem with us spending the money to do the repairs, because what's the grand total on the long-range facility plan? So, it's ten million dollars, which is what it was when I joined the board, so it seems to be some kind of stable number, even though in my years on the board, we hit around five or six million dollars in repairs. We can't seem to ever budge that much. Well, I hear what you're saying, but in the years when we managed to bank cap, did we also not grow our reserves that we're also tapping into? When I joined the board, we didn't even have fifty thousand dollars to fix the boiler at River View in reserves, and now what did we have? That we were able to pull nine hundred thousand dollars. I mean, so, I, I hear what you're saying, but statistically responsible boards did five million dollars worth of work and put money into capital reserves. No, we're not.
Those were back before they did the bank cap, and all of those ten, twelve, eight percent increases were all back when you had to vote on the budget every year. It wasn't.
But that's what you already voted for.
Doesn't mean we have to keep, doesn't mean we have to keep growing the base.
But for this year, when it's not.
Well, I think also, let's not forget too, that every, we try to look out strategically, but every budget year we look at very differently. If you look at the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen budget, that it was only a point eight seven percent increase, but it was an eighty-five dollar positive tax impact on the average household. So, the point being that every year is different. We have to look at the tax impact, the percentage, what's needed for a capital project. I mean, to me, I think it's not a singular focused, hey, what's the tax impact? We don't look at it just that way. We don't look at it just the two percent, just the bank cap, just whatever it is.
I wasn't talking about that.
No, no, I'm just saying, I'm just, I'm not making any comment about anybody else. I'm just saying in general, we look at the holistic picture of the budget and what's available to us at this time and this year. And I will tell you, going into this budget cycle, we probably didn't realize what the impact was gonna be, and we still had all those projects on the list. So, it's not like we added a whole, it's not like we said, oh, good, this is a, a good year for tax impact, so let's add a couple million dollars worth of projects. Products are there. It's just, should we take advantage of trying to, um, get some additional in this year, or should we hold on? It's different every year.
And in part, you could argue, those targets are there, because what happened in previous years, when the economy tanked and the ratables turned down, these boards pulled in and banked the cap. But we also deferred targets. We basically took a long-term future, all of these long-range CC targets in that. Now, we have to prepare. I mean, these buildings, these structures, all, we have a series of them. We do have to prepare. So, we put off some of the stuff that could have been done maybe in the previous years. Like, to me, that twenty million dollars is a long-range facility.
Is it twenty or ten?
Well, it's twenty, but that's also, you know, you could back out, it's twenty-four nine. If you could back out to the thing you did, right, you did some of the site works, you did, we're doing the roof. You could back out to four million for the roof, that was, you know, two million. And then you could also back out all the new construction, considering the replacement of the, the hot, if you back all that out, you still owe somewhere an eighteen million dollars. I mean, there's over a million dollars of site work in the district, district wide alone, just the site. And there's, um, this is a dock that we got to Ohio. There's, you know, say, interior door replacements, about a million dollars, just getting replaced the doors, like, block. This is on our, you know, on the road. So, there's a lot of, I mean, you did, you did a lot of bathroom, but you still have other bathrooms. Some of the stuff is to be covered by these. We have to worry about our HVAC. We had another, I mean, just the late due low of almost a million dollars in HVAC. You know, I'll talk. Keep working on it.
So, I mean, you know, look, I think, I think there's, we're in the back, and it's also, we could have done this, but I think both sides, both sides of the bargain are true. Um, we have a lot of work to do. We've done it, but, um, you know, I'm not sure that I put a right answer, but I think, I honestly feel the same with that budget, we come to this year. And what we're able to accomplish, I don't know if it's accomplish. If not, we're gonna take roll call on item one, the budget.
Yes.
I'm really unhappy about it, but yes.
No. Here's the cap.
Yes. Yes. Um, I just wanna point out, and I'm gonna probably butcher the, like, people saying that, uh, contributing to, uh, Pabusha, Pabushanab, um, or contributing to, how did that work? Is that something they did go, they do together? Are they going to trade those off the water and donate it?
The good, the good thing about it is the record of it, and the letter from, it's not on it.
Well, and I have to say, you know, when we, uh, when Steve first had to cut the first letter out about, uh, basically water testing, um, this first comment that he posted on the rugby base page was, how do we go in? We have to do that.
Yeah, that's a question number three. How many, uh, how many respondents did we get to the RFP? And I'm assuming Brown and Brown was the, uh, lower of the bids. Yeah. So, this is, this is gonna cost us more money. What exactly do our brokers do? Twelve thousand dollars a year. And why am I not a broker? But even still, with the state, you have to go to a broker? I mean, isn't the state managing the plan?
You know, I asked the, the, the day the, uh, broker, I think, did already. When we came playing, they go through, that whole process, and everybody does it.
You're not, um, are, are we locked into these two, uh, plans based on the topic? The description plan, we can go to the state plan. That was more money, though, right? So, we can go to the state plan.
It's major, it's don't have stuff. Whatever you may be, we just have to have that.
But are we locked into practically the same with Venicard, or if next year it switches in the states cheaper, could we switch to the states?
With Venicard or.
In the state program? What about the, uh, dental? Are we locked into Delta Dental, or?
Our dental is really, um, you, you kind of, I don't know. We, we, the contract also, with the board, it's very little. Like, it's probably less than, less than twenty-five percent, like, what it costs to look. Really rough. I mean, like, we have a cap, say, thirty thousand dollars. We only pay thirty thousand dollars, no matter what happens to the plan. And it now falls against the numbers.
Do you know the total number that we're paying Brown and Brown? The twelve thousand is just the consulting fee, but then there's a commission on top of that.
Have we asked them if they would be willing to drop their consulting fees so that the costs are even? Is, I see that it's going to be changed immediately. Uh, is that, is that what I'm understanding here? And that was, okay, so, and the two bids that you received, Maris, were from our current? And were quibbling over twelve hundred bucks? Okay. Okay, then, um, if we're done talking about that, I'd like to ask about number four. There's old, there's outstanding checks dating back to twenty fourteen on that list, correct? Don't the checks, aren't the checks void after six months or something like that? Because I saw one of them was for like twelve or fourteen hundred dollars. You would think that somebody would notice missing a payroll check for fourteen hundred bucks. I am. Um, the, uh, the last question I have is, uh, about the disposal of the damaged old laptops. Uh, have we made sure that if any of them still have hard drives, that those hard drives have been wiped? Okay, I, I wanted, I, I remember us talking about it. I wanna make sure that we had, we had actually either removed or wiped the hard drives, because that's a real easy way for confidential information to get out where it's not supposed to.
Just actually to the public, uh, information, because I asked it about number two. Can you, can you just explain why, I think you just wrote about last month or two months ago on the financing portion of the, you just, just explain why this is two.
Well, the first, the first one was to approve the financing of it, and this is the one we should approve, the contract, the funding of the asset. It's just the way, I mean, this is all possible.
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanna make sure that anybody's reading it and following, uh, uh, that company, they know.
And we, we have two attorneys on bond, that says the address, that's called the decent address, and also, actually, Toby asked me to do the contract, so that he, he wrote the language. And also Magic Kobe asked you to contract, so that he, he wrote the language for the, uh, the revenue.
Oh, hopefully.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Luen?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes, I did.
I have to abstain from six, seven, six, zero, seven, is that right? I have to abstain from check number six, seven, six, zero, seven, but otherwise, yes.
I'm going to abstain on motion two. And on motion number nine, I will abstain on check number six, seven, five, six, two. And then I'll vote yes whenever we do it.
Mr. Cap? You can have a room?
Yes.
Moving on to buildings and grounds, it's a cap. Like to move and prove it. So, we had a committee meeting last night, we extended, and, uh, with the fourth day, and, and the driver, basically discussed, you know, some details, kind of, why this needed, and how it could work. And obviously, the planning, you have to go into it, make sure that it really happened needed, it didn't happen needed. So, a lot of times, staff that they, they don't have anything, they don't have too much to say to them.
Uh, just to make it clear for the public, we're talking about a sandy level event that happens quickly enough that we are not able to get the kids home before it happens. We're not talking about like, uh, a hurricane coming through. We're talking about sandy level of devastation. Uh, Sandy Hook or, I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about Hurricane Sandy.
Yeah, it charges up the debt.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, we're, we're talking about a individual school level kind of disaster or, uh, some other kind of disaster that is, that requires people to be, basically shuts down the town.
There's nothing else, so hopefully.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Luen? Mr. Lawrence? Mr. Muntz?
Yes.
Mr. Cap?
Yes.
You can have a room? Mr. Cap?
Yes.
Oh, we are doing this, we're not, I mean, we're not voting to, we're not, we're not, we're not.
Um. Seeing nothing in transportation, we can move on to a little pause. Living report, I am leveraging on my tax committee minutes.
I, I have something very up in it, maybe I still don't, uh, excuse me. Yeah, well, I was about the R, R H S situation, that we've done this several long time. And, um, you know, I'm just wondering if, whether it's the bad track, the way the wrenches water. I know this is different content, we, uh, got a bit of it, and I know at these finance committee meetings, we put the budget together in five years. We're always happy with the, uh, trying to be a surprise. And all of the whole, when you went back to Congress, you know, they've been paid down, they've caused pay down. So if you had a question, you could get a lot of money. So, um, you know, it's a traditional, that was, uh, problematic.
Well, and there is part of, part of the reason why we wanted to prove this, right? Because once they're approved, it just starts losing. A lot of brokers start looking back at our rates in the last few years. We also asked Matt Cody to, to see if they, if we, you know, if you, if you turn, possibly that stuff. So that we're involved, and not. So we will have our new broker do that. That's, that's what we can talk, that's true, that's true.
I think, and there's others. You have, um, people who think there's a sort of a, to me, kind of, um, I think, anything really that, that, I mean, they're very, very, uh, so, do you have any kind of email? So can you, I think, you know, if you, I don't know if you all, if you, uh, recommend?
Because I don't know off the top of your head, what you think is, uh, reasonable around the time, even to get back with an email, I received your email, I'll look into it and get back to you, like, any kind of a response so that people know it was received?
Uh, I mean, to me, my general rule of thumb is within twenty-four business hours of the person being at work. In other words, if they're out of work, you should know. I don't expect these answers, I think, I think ninety percent of our people do it, you know? Uh, or whether or not.
What is twenty-four business hours? So if I, if it's in your inbox, when you come in at eight AM, is that like two days?
No, twenty-four business hours means like, if it's in, you got it Saturday morning.
Oh, you don't expect it to be Monday, but if, if you walk in on a Wednesday morning and it's sitting in your inbox, should somebody have heard back from the teacher by now? Oh, so by now, definitely? It, it wasn't you, no.
Yeah, our, our principals, we talked about, is our principals feel like a twenty-four hour.
In the inbox, and they haven't had a document today, who should they let know?
I think we should, just, all, all of them, I do that.
Or, so, and if it's, let's say it's not a teacher, but a child, so it's members, then it's.
It might not be a bad idea along the same line to advise staff to check their spam folders. Uh, I personally have had some difficulties emailing various teachers because went straight to spam rather than going to their inbox. It's not their fault, but that's something they should maybe suggest that they check.
We also found out that we have, the way our system is set up, there are some emails, yes, that are just in the math. It is gonna work on that, some of it. If you, some people have their own domain, like, see that fool's hit that one, to set it up their own type of system, we won't accept it. They won't even go to spam, and I, so, so she's gonna work on it.
All right. Um, it'll be, it'll be two days, May nineteen, and you find that, and you find that.
I'm trying to, can you?
What, you know, the. You can message, right over there in the, the other. If there's nothing else, I will open for public comment at nine eleven P M. Anything at all, you may do this. If you have anything at all to speak about, please come up and sign in and ask your name and address for that. May nine, I will forward the public comment at nine eleven P M. Open up any voice.
If you look at a three, two, three, a project, it's pretty high. Generally, a project, some are in three hundred, three hundred and three, I don't know, two hundred and three.
If there's nothing else, we'll, yeah, we're gonna do one, we're gonna, we're, 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 we're. Do you wanna talk about, yeah, why don't we, and, all right, in that case, we'll close for the board comments, and if you're editing the details.
Move to convening in executive session according to section eight of the Public and Public Meetings Act. The purpose of this closed session will be to discuss, discuss legal and personnel issues. Minutes of this session will be made available to the public, and the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
All second. All favor? All opposed? We will not be voting on anything when we come back. Thank you for coming tonight. Nine thirty, nine thirty.